As being come to order, today is Tuesday, July 11th, 2017. This is a special study session of the Prescott City Council. Thanks for coming in, everybody. We've got a couple of very interesting items to talk about today. Roll call.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lamerson.
What were you going to say? What were you going to say? I'm here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shisca.
Here.
The Councilman Lozelle and Councilman Wilcox will be absent this afternoon. Excuse us.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion item A.
A presentation on Deepwell Ranch Master Plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Chamberlain. We, Chamberlain Development, have been selected by the James family to represent them in the development of what you're going to see today. We're pretty excited about what we're going to show you today, very excited, actually. Couple of quick thoughts, and then I'll introduce some folks, but the commercial economic engine of things that we're going to bring is significant, maybe never before seen in the city limit. It involves 1,800 acres of a ranch consisting of 19,000 acres, basically everything between Prescott and Chino. The development agreement has been sent recently to Mr. Palladini. We have that in process, as well as a number of other things. It's noteworthy, I think, to point out that a great number of meetings have been held with staff, a number of the staff, not just Planning Department, Development Services, but also with Engineering. Lots of progress has been made as it relates to infrastructure and so on and so forth. Maybe a couple of other quick things. The airport and the importance of the airport is very significant to the James family and to the overall master plan as it relates to the growth and the well-being of the city community, or the community of Prescott for the next several generations, potentially. So all that has been given a great deal of thought. Maybe the most significant and fun thing for me today is to introduce to you the James family. They are very, very much community-oriented, have been for a long time, long time, maybe since the '50s. I think we're all fortunate to have them leading this master plan presentation and hopefully development as we go along. But prior to that, I have been here myself, developing for the last 20 years, done a number of projects, Southview, Eagle Ridge, Cathedral Pines, on and on, several. I would like to thank city staff. Done a lot, met a lot, a lot has been accomplished, you know, Tom Geis, George Worley, and even before that Craig McConnell, in terms of the annexation agreement that has been going on for 10 years, perhaps, getting all that land annexed. So today is kind of the beginning of, it's not the end, because a lot has happened already. It's the beginning of what I believe to be a very exciting set of circumstances development-wise where you're going through forward. So with that, I would like to introduce Ron and Jenna James and their fine attorney that's been involved for years and years, Sal Ludi. It's my pleasure to introduce those. Ron, would you like to say something?
Mayor and Council, I just want to let you know that we're very proud today to present this master plan. It's been a long time coming. Some people think this has been a short project, but I just confirmed with staff that we've been working on this for over 15 years already, so this has been a long project. We are very proud, the James family is very proud to present this. We think this is going to be a great thing for the city, economic boon, hopefully, and it's not going to be a short term. This is a 35 to 50-year build-out for this, long after I'm gone, and most of you too. Anyway, so we're looking forward to this. We're very excited. It's a very comprehensive plan, and we hope that we have addressed a lot of the issues. And to be honest with you, I'm going to turn it over to Trevor, because I know nobody wants to listen to me anymore. Trevor?
Mayor and Council, Trevor Berger. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this afternoon. As you can tell, a lot of people incredibly excited about the possibilities here with Deepwell Ranch, and we've been working with staff, looking at this area and this region, trying to figure out exactly what happens here and how does that work. It's interesting, because it's an area that's already zoned. So typically, we're here asking for zoning for the first time, and we're saying, you know, here's what we'd like to do and how we'd like to do that. And so instead, what we've been focused on is how should the property be planned and arranged and developed, rather than on what its zoning should be. And so we started looking at the regional context. In the area, it's pretty impressive when you take a look at the size of the ranch, of course, been there for a long time and developing, and talking only about a very small part of it. So the brown there, Depot Ranch, showing the location north of Prescott and to the northwest of Prescott Valley, and really looking at it as almost the ranch itself as the size of Prescott Valley in total, but only looking at a very small piece of the ranch. So really, we're talking about less than 10% of the total ranch area, and it's that area that's already been annexed into the city. So again, we're not talking about annexation today. That's kind of already been decided. And so talking about in those pieces, what do we look at? Major elements there, of course, are the airport and the infrastructure that comes with the airport. The city has made huge investments in that infrastructure already in place, and so we've been looking at how to take advantage of that infrastructure investment. In that zoning, when we look at the zoning there in sight, we already have all the uses that we're talking about incorporating into a new master plan for the area. We have the employment uses, the retail uses, the multifamily high-density uses, and the single-family uses. In total, the property is currently zoned for 15,800 residential units there, and an immense amount of commercial industrial use there. And so we started looking at what would, what do we actually want the property to develop as? And the city has long talked about an economic engine in this area that would be a strong sales tax generator. These are fairly fragile things, and so that's where we spend our time, looking first, is what does that look like? Here, a concept of what that might play out as on the property. We immediately then start talking about what is the framework that allows that to happen? And we start talking about things in districts and regions and the connectivity for that. For a strong economic engine, you really need incredible infrastructure to feed it, and as we sort of tease, the simple thing, if you want to kill an economic engine, just cut off all the access to it, or the visibility from it, and it'll die pretty quickly, unfortunately. And so we talk about how to provide that access. We also look at other examples of where these have happened very successfully and what it took to support them successfully. So here in the Phoenix metro area, Desert Ridge, this is a very large regional complex. It is supported by a great deal of wealth in North Phoenix to be able to do that, but this shown here on this slide is the same scale as what we're imagining. So when the James family talks about it developing over an entire generation, you can understand why. This is not something that happens immediately, but is a long-term plan. The same, comparing it to a very successful center in Austin, Texas, the Domain, similar scales again, looking at how these things can develop and making sure that we're not going out beyond what we think we can possibly accomplish in the region. And looking at character that sort of sets that. We looked at Austin primarily because it had a landscape and a natural setting that was much like the concerns we have here about how do we develop in these sort of areas. And then also looking at change and realizing, as I've explained before, one of my favorite plans is the plan for Chicago, and of course, they did not include in any way, shape, or form plans for O'Hare in that, primarily because the airplane was just made a few years before the plan, and the first airport in the country came along a few years after the plan. And so you create a plan, so it creates a framework and flexibility for it to know when the airport comes, where do we put it? The same when we talk about an economic engine. We all know right now the economics of retail are changing dramatically. What will drones have to do with that? What will the cell phones do to that? What will online do to that? When we have vehicles driving us around town all the time that we just sort of call up on our cell phones, what does that do to that? And so instead of looking at the actual component of, you know, what sort of store will go there and how will that store function, we look at the framework. How will we attract economics to be a strong part of this area? How will we support the economics that come here, in whatever format that those come in the next 50 years? And so we look at that plan and that framework. We look at it on a regional level, and so here showing all of the ranch and all of the connectivity that comes through the area, looking at the regional scales, we of course look at the general plan. In working with staff, we were able to say that we are in compliance with the general plan, so we were trying to do this as the general plan outlaid, and it was voted on by the citizens to be in the setting. And so we look at the adjustments to the regional system to make sure that we can accommodate these uses. Zooming in on that portion of the ranch that we're talking about developing here, looking at how to arrange in general ways the intensity of those uses. And so as this sort of demonstrates, really by the intersections of 89A, 89, and Willow Creek, that's where that kind of major intensity would occur. It would also occur in employment sort of uses and office uses around the airport, and then often, single-family neighborhoods as you get further and further away from that core. We look at those systems and talk about how to set up a roadway network that emphasizes and supports that economic engine, uses that are complementary to the airport and how the airport operates, and in setting how to make the hierarchy of those roadway systems. And so working with staff, and we've looked at different ways of providing a road system through here that can take on and keep the Prescott character that Prescott has so incredibly developed over the years. We also look at an open space network. And so in the upper left there, you see the diagram talking about how we think about an open space network with major regional destinations, and then local neighborhood parks that connect via great walking streets to those areas. And on our plan, then, you can see the little itty-bitty stars making up that small neighborhood network that connects to the large stars that are regional centers that provide that. And then, of course, across the north there, you see the importance of bottleneck wash, a 200-foot-wide open space and wildlife corridor that slices through the property there that keeps that corridor open. We also look at the bikes and pedestrian routes that kind of make that system work. Prescott, of course, has an incredible pedestrian system already, and so talking about how to link into the trails and bike system that Prescott has, how to connect a Pioneer Park, how to connect the Peavine, and so then looking at through the property, taking advantage of some of the natural features that go through there, looking at the infrastructure and talking with city staff who've come up with some really clever ways about providing bicycle and trail connections in those areas, and providing an entire network of that to support the neighborhoods that are what the resident, what the commercial center needs to support the commercial uses. We also look at the airport. We look at all of the plans that sort of guide and protect the airport on the very specific level, the master plan and the airport area-specific plan. These have sort of the least amount of control authority over land use, but often have the best suggestions about land use. We look at the existing zoning and the zoning of the airport noise overlay and what that suggests goes on in these areas, and then we look at the FAA. The FAA, strangely enough, has the most teeth, but at the same time, has the least amount of restriction. And so when we look at the zoned property now, for example, when you take off from the runway, just on the other side of 89, the existing zoning suggests that there could be a 50-foot-tall industrial building at that location. In working with the airport, though, really, this is an area that they want to protect and need to have some assurances over. And so we look at other airports for those sort of possibilities of what happens there. Here we have Scottsdale Airport. Our office is superimposed, you can kind of see upside down, the 89, the Pioneer Parkway and Willow Creek as they come across there, and these are the noise, the purple is the noise contours from the Prescott Airport, the yellow, the long-term projections for the Scottsdale Airport, and the aerial you see underneath of it is the Scottsdale aerial. And so we look at saying what sort of uses, even if an airport was to get as large as Scottsdale's airport, would be allowed in these sort of areas surrounding it, and trying to make projections about our long-term use of the airport in such a way as that we take full advantage of the infrastructure the city has already invested in, while at the same time, making sure that we have a strong working relationship. So in Scottsdale, for example, they break their airport restrictions out in this way, a purple zone, a green zone, and a blue zone. The red zone, of course, is the neighboring city, which they have no control over, so they make a lot of suggestions in that area. Zooming into that same area, in the purple zone and in the discourage residential development, and so in similar ways, we have discouraged residential development in these areas. In the green zone, they recommend residential development comes with noise abatement issues, double-pane windows, insulation in the attic and house to be able to mitigate the effects of being located near an airport. And in the blue area, it recommends things such as a navigation easement, very similar to what the airport noise overlay currently does in Prescott. And so we took those same sort of things and set in this document a framework for how to protect the airport. And so in these graphics, for example, you can see a airport navigation easement over the entire property. All owners who come would sign off on an easement stating that they are in proximity to an airport, because that's part of what's attracted them to the area. There are two areas that the airport master plan says are of vital importance to the airport. Those are the two areas you see marked on the next graphic, and in these areas, we're proposing that there be no buildings at all, that these areas, instead of being in industrial use, actually be open space and open space areas that protect the airport's operations. Again, on the left, these are the areas that we think really need to be restricted to have no residential uses at all in those areas, to make sure that is protected that way. And in the graphic on the right, these are the areas that we think any uses really need to consider noise abatement issues in the constructions of the buildings. Again, those would be any of the buildings that would get built in those areas with the limitation of the open space area. It's easy to protect the buildings, there are no buildings. The master plan also then allows us to set a character. The master plan is not a small document. We covered a lot of detail with the staff, and so the master plan that'll be coming before you is about 200 pages. It covers all sorts of development details about how to do that. One of the fun things it includes is the ability to start defining character. And so instead of defining things by very specific zoning categories, because we can combine zoning into one category, we broke it up into land use groups, and these are the kind of groups you see. Everything from open and civic space to the neighborhoods, in estate and village, to the apartment sort of uses and condominium uses that would come in district and in urban, general urban, with regional campus, and even the very outside remote possibility, because we're developing over so long a time period, we want to save the ability to have a retreat, a hospitality use in this sort of setting. And so then, this sort of zoning allows you to say, you know, anywhere where there's an asterisk on there would actually be a great location for a hotel. We don't think we'll probably get that many hotels, but if one were to come, here's where we think that they could go. And allows the hotel then to say, you know, if we came, here's where we'd want to be, and it's already set for them to be able to do that. It also talks about the character, the street character. We've described it really as Prescott, as our role model, very easily as rural and urban character, and have taken models that kind of come from rural Prescott and urban Prescott to be able to build that type of character in the setting. And then the same with our open space. We talk about very urban and very rural open spaces, some of which are just natural trails wandering through the beautiful landscape, and others that are park settings that are designed for heavy intense human activity. Part of our request will also include a comprehensive sign plan. Signage in this zoning category is not included as one of the things in the master plan, but because we're talking about an economic engine that is heavily dependent on signage, we wanted to include in the master plan signs as well as streets and paths and trails and other things. And so the city came up with a great way to include it via comprehensive sign plan, so that's one of the elements we include. In total, the things that are kind of, we're out in the public realm for, there's currently a text amendment that the city staff initiated with the SPC zoning, so it can include employment and business uses. And then we are before you, going to be coming before you to request a development agreement, so that we all get through all of the documents together, a text amendment to the airport-specific area plan to allow a master plan to sort of govern land use in that area, a rezoning to the specially-planned community with a airport noise overlay for all this piece, which requires a master plan. This is the master plan we've submitted so far to the city staff for the review, and a comprehensive sign plan to allow signage to be a part of that document. We have two open houses coming up, one on Tuesday and one on Thursday. Notices have gone out for those, and so we're in the part of our process where we're reaching out to the public to get their input on our master plan. That's our presentation. If there are any questions at this time, otherwise, we hope to see you out of the open houses.
Questions, comments from the council?
Well, Mayor, I'll start a comment. Great job. It's going to be a beautiful, I probably won't be here to see it finished, but congratulations. It's just really going to be spectacular, and I really love, we all know how important that airport is to Prescott, and that you've put that as part of your plan, so thank you for that.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, you know, I've been up here a while. Want to thank the James family for sharing what's rightfully theirs with the rest of the community, discussing with the rest of the community what they have a right to do to begin with. Thank you very much, Ron, Laura, the rest of the family. I think it's going to be a great project, and again, thank you for investing in the city of Prescott, because you could have invested somewhere else and you chose us. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Shisca?
Thank you, Mayor. Ron and Jenna, and sorry not to see Laura here today, but thank you very much for everything you've done out there. I think it's going to be gorgeous, and it's going to be very utilitarian from the standpoint of working with our current infrastructure. So thank you very much, and we appreciate that. And thanks, Sal.
One of my concerns, I guess, is are you working with the master planning staff at the airport?
We are. We've had several conversations with a consultant, and then we're doing a presentation this week, I think, or next week, next Tuesday, to them as well.
And maybe if I could have John Cox step up to the mic for a second?
Absolutely.
I do know that during the recent fire, in particular with the heavier planes that we had that were operating out there in the shortness of the runway, they weren't getting much height before they left the end of the runway, out into that area that they're showing, I think right now is open space, which is probably good. What height do you think they were when they were actually getting across the road into that area?
Mayor, that's a good question. There were several different aircraft fleet that was included in that. Some of the heavies, you know, actually took off at risk, and it was just due to the critical nature of their mission, so some of them at times were not 50 feet over the end of the runway, and I speculate that as they were crossing over the threshold of 89, it was probably around 100 feet. I don't have the exact measurements, but we did have some videos that were showing that, so. In working certainly, you know, with the team here, Mr. James and other staff, I think the only certain request from the airport staff is just to make sure it's compatible land use to support all of the existing activities at the airport, and I know that they're making the efforts towards that.
I do know that some of the airport users are a little concerned that this development can cause certain restrictions on the airport, maybe not be as operational as they've experienced in the past, but again, you know, I ask that Jim Chamberlain and Ron James and everybody work with the airport and try and make sure that, you know, they can relieve some of their anxieties, maybe, because everything I'm seeing is we're taking into consideration exactly the FAA footprint for noise, safety, and everything else. So I'm confident that, you know, we're going to move forward on this thing without any problem, but at the same time, I think it's very important to make all the airport users out there that understand that this is not going to restrict them in any future endeavors that they might have at the airport.
Yeah, and concurrently as well, you know, you're running the master plan project as well, and that's what the FAA is certainly aware of, is the requests from this community to extend the runway. If that runway was extended, the height and the elevation over the proposed development area would increase, so I think there would be a big benefit as far as the airport development is concerned.
Okay. And I'm assuming that you're taking into consideration that if we do get some lengthening of the runway, that, how that might change the FAA footprint model and how that might affect some of the things that you could do in your planning. Is that correct?
Strangely enough, we took a very conservative approach, and so while we're looking forward to the aircraft that can be accommodated by the longer runway, the runway will actually move, I think, 400 feet further from the ranch, and we said, well, let's assume it didn't, and go with that scenario.
Okay.
As a good way to plan.
All right, good.
Councilwoman Blair, did you have anything? Okay. I'll take a few comments from the public, if anybody wants to step forward.
Mayor, council, my name is Sandra Smith, 701 Whitesbar. I'd just like to say that this open space, especially near the runways, is outstanding. I've seen too many places where runways got built up on, and then planes had problems with noise abatement procedures, they cut to 40% of their power as soon as the wheels left the ground. Worst time in the world. That's when they need their power. So leave the space open, let them have that safe zone, that buffer, for everybody's sake. Not just the residents with the noise, but the planes, the pilots, and their passengers. Because that's when they need their power. That's the worst, the most dangerous time, is takeoff or landing. I'm a pilot's kid, I grew up with that. Read a lot of NTSB reports, don't like them. So thank you for that plan. That's good.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Leslie Hoy. I just have a question about the anticipated amount of acre-feet that this is predicated on, and any thoughts about water that the development would like to share?
Craig, can you step up and talk about that for a minute, please?
Absolutely.
No, I want to have Craig McConnell.
Craig, perfect. Mayor and council, in the remarks, there was reference made to annexation agreement in the past, and that annexation agreement had a second part, which was a water settlement agreement. So Depot Ranch has vested and available approximately 950 acre-feet of water as we stand here today. If and when the Big Chino comes online, that quantity will just about double. So understanding the plan of Depot Ranch to develop water-efficient residential development and other uses, the water to which they're entitled, which is a significant quantity, will be stretched out, if you will. But as indicated in the master, or actually the general plan, we really do have to be careful about water, and there's probably more developable land in the airport area than water will be available, even with the Big Chino project. But we have been working for 15 years on what water is available and balancing that with the amount of development. So certainly, as part of the planning process, fundamental to that and fundamental to the rate of growth will be water availability, but they have entitlement to specific quantities, which is much different than any other potential developer who came in the door.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you. You didn't have to sit down, Mr. McConnell, but that's okay. I can reiterate what I was going to ask you to re, we've been working on this for 15 years. I mean, this isn't something that just drove out the parkway, you know what I'm saying? Whether it comes to water, whether it comes to open space, whether it comes to roads, this is something that's been in the hopper for quite a while. And I really think that the James family have stepped up to the plate, have shown their commitment to the city of Prescott, and it's time to start moving forward a little bit on this. This is, in effect, part of the future of the city of Prescott. It's part of the legacy of the people that are here today, that we didn't shut the door, that we're going about growth in a responsible manner. We're going about growth in a manner that protects what's here today with an airport that can use a longer form of runway to ensure that the bombers that are being developed today have an opportunity to fight what we need them to fight tomorrow, and we didn't give away the ranch to do it, so to speak, Ron, sorry about that. But what, in fact, what really happened is Ron gave away part of his ranch to try and help this community, so, just sharing it with you. So if you want to respond to that, you're more than welcome to, because you've been here a long time, working on this, Craig.
Right. Well, to state it a little bit different way, back during the formulation of the most recent version of the general plan that was mentioned, the limitations on water availability were part of that process. And in fact, if you look at the general plan on the water resource element of that, and if you review from the get-go, the presentations that were made, there was a clear statement of resource constraint. And so for this master plan or any other development in this community to happen, there has to be water available. In the particular case of the Depot Ranch, there was a water settlement which allocated a substantial quantity of renewable resource. a substantial quantity of renewable resource, what we call alternative water, not additional groundwater pumping, because state law says that development, like what we are talking about or what the presentation described today, must be done with renewable resource. And the city of Prescott, that means water which is impounded and recharged in our lakes and, secondly, treated and recharged effluent. And all of these quantities are projected and reviewed by the state of Arizona and there is a resource availability quantity which is established. And this development, this master plan, and any other development has to be supplied with water within that recognized quantity, or it cannot develop. So, with respect to water, availability, efficient use, and you recall, we now have unit allocations which more accurately reflect what the actual use is. Water conservation, we have a very strong program in water conservation and so forth. But really, the master plan aspect of this is something which is integral to the success from a community standpoint, that all these parts fit together, they've been thought out from the beginning. It's not a particular plan, as Trevor described, that is locked into a particular technology or something like that, or lifestyle. It's a multi-generational framework for being able to adapt to what the future trends and lifestyles and needs and wants are. So, again, with respect to water, they have water, they're entitled to water, they're going to use that water efficiently, and it should be a successful project.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Any other public comments?
I got one comment, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I kind of want to echo Craig McConnell's statement as well as Jim's. I've been here for awhile, 1999, when we first put together the Water Resources Committee. You know, that's going back a ways. And the bottom line is, it's worked really well. We put together great items within our water portfolio that's allowed us to move forward over the years. We've secured the water for this development. And now, it's time for the James family to move forward and do what they want to with their land. And the water has been set aside based upon what the Water Committee's done in the past 18 years. And I think it will be one great addition to this community.
Okay, I want to thank Jim and Ron and Trevor for that fine presentation. And I know I got Steve Quinn back there. He's got to figure out the electrical for all of this. I know he just loves to hear what's going on so he can be ahead of the curve on this thing. So, if you haven't met him, I'll have you be with him a little later. But anyway, thank you for that briefing. We'll go on to our second item.
Item B, presentation by Public Works on the city's stormwater program and MS4 permit.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Matt Colleen. I'll be presenting today, surface water quality update as it relates to ongoing contracts we have as well as our MS4 permit. In spirit of that, our presentation overview will feature those two items, as well as one that's a little bit of a tangent, a little bit of departure from surface water, and that's dealing with a water quality issue in groundwater near Miller Valley Road and Hillside Avenue. So, we currently have an ongoing contract with A. McFoster Wheeler to help us develop plans for both the lake management and the watershed management as a means of reducing pollutants to our creeks and lakes. Currently, we've gone through and completed the water quality TM deal regulatory compliance plan, watershed monitoring plan. In progress right now, we have the Watson Lake Reservoir Water Quality Monitoring. They'll actually be up tomorrow. And they, as you can see in the photos there, monitor the lake at five different points, at different points within the water column to get representative samples. And this is really the time of year when the action is happening. We have these warm temperatures. This is when those nutrient cycles start getting a little bit of haywire. We start getting more inputs through runoff and rain. And so, this is when some really important information is being gathered. Concurrently in progress, we also have the upper Granite Creek watershed model. And that actually got delayed a little bit. And one of the reasons that was delayed is because our contractors were working more efficiently than anticipated. And so, what that allowed us to do was go out and do what is referred to as street dirt sampling. And by picking 16 sites throughout the city, based on the different type of use in that area, from commercial to residential to mixed use, we went out and collected dirt at those sites. And the significance of it is that those dirt particles transport, the different sizes transport different pollutant types. And this is really key, particularly with regards to the nutrient transport that's loading our lakes and causing problems there. And so, all of this was done with the existing contract, no additional cost to us at that point in time. And in the process of doing that, due to great cross-departmental cooperation, we actually finished the day ahead of time and saved money from both personnel and lodging as a result of that. At some point down the line, we will be bringing future contract amendments. And that will be putting the bow on this larger project to deal with actual plans in terms of operational ways of managing the lake and/or the watershed. Do we need additional street sweepers and what would those routes look like? All of these will be based on good scientific evidence to reduce those pollutants either going to our lakes or the creeks that course throughout the city. So, they're in good shape there. Now, I'll go to our own. Last time I presented before you, we were just kind of realizing a pretty significant regulatory shakeup with regards to our municipal separate storm sewer system, otherwise known as MS4 permit. We were able to submit ours and they took it and said, "Great, no additional information is necessary." When the new permit did come out, it did have pretty significant changes in the last draft. So, that really forced us to move quickly to adopt some of those changes. And that permit did go into effect September 30th, which is concurrent with EPA mandates from Onihi. I provided this diagram mostly in an effort to kind of break down these significant deadlines that we are facing. And so, we'll go through to give a progress update on each of these. In March of 2017, we did file our notice of intent under the new permit. And we also had a new stormwater management plan. We did this with our contractor, A. McFoster Wheeler. Both the notice of intent and the stormwater management plan are available on our website. So, those are fresh links that have been in place for a number of months now. In June, just a month ago, we were supposed to have analytical monitoring in place. And I touched on it last time about being there under the bridges to collect as stormwater ran off through the gutters. We actually brought this onboard earlier. One of the reasons is, is we were having an ongoing dialogue with ADEQ about what our monitoring plan should look like. And the best way we could inform the discussion and dialogue was to actually go out and conduct this monitoring. So, over the winter, thanks to the wetness that we experienced, we actually completed our obligatory monitoring in half the time. And that has proven to be invaluable when we go back and talk with these folks about what our monitoring plan should look like. Should we be doing the same sites on a repeated basis? Or should we be moving around town because we have so many different places where water enters our creeks? And so, from our perspective, if, you know, you get a clean reading, why would you stay there? Let's move on to another place that's a suspected pollutant and try to reduce that from entering our creeks. On top of that, we've created a decision matrix where it informs where we're monitoring. And that includes, as pictured on the left of the screen there, green infrastructure. That is an increasingly important feature in our community to reduce pollutants to our creeks. Alarkan, the currently under construction, Ackerpark Detention Basin, both figure significantly in that. And so, we will be monitoring, now that monsoon has come to visit, we will be finding out ways to monitor that to determine what impacts that has on our water quality. So, that's, I'm looking forward to seeing that. In the case of the rodeo grounds bio-basin, with most flows, we can see a 60% reduction from the rodeo grounds and all the stalls that they have there, from what enters the top of that basin to discharges into Miller Creek. That's pretty significant. ADEQ has taken notice on that. So, let's see here.
Does that mean we've had somewhat of a success?
It is. But it's not so overwhelming that that cleans up all of Miller Creek.
And I understand that. I'm being a little bit facetious in some of my comments because in the past, we hear we're not doing very much. Been here a long time. We've done a lot. We've done a lot, including the Aqua for Protection Fee that all the ratepayers paid and provide some of the monies that are necessary to take care of some of the monitoring, et cetera, and some of the things that we are doing throughout this community to ensure that the water that goes into those lakes isn't what it used to be.
Very, very true. And that's part of my job, is to communicate that in a meaningful way. ADEQ really has kind of two sides of their house. They've got more of a regulatory that's interested more in the letter of those permits and that we're meeting those mandates. And then, there's more of the science side of the house, which is what's informing the TMDOs. And so, what my job is to do is inform them, let them know there's projects like the Ackerpark Detention Basin, others like Marina Street that features a rain garden. But then also get the numbers to talk to that science side of the house and demonstrate a reduction in our pollutant load.
Thank you very much. And anytime we do an analysis or a public disclosure, whatever you want to call these things, I'm not a government person, so I don't talk your language, let's not forget the volunteers of the Prescott creeks. Because these people have been very instrumental over the past 15, 20 years in making sure that a lot of stuff is not where it used to be.
No, absolutely. They are a significant contributor to the health of our creeks. We work hand-in-hand with them. I saw Michael step in earlier. We were talking just yesterday about how we coordinate our monitoring of this green infrastructure and about who's going to go out and look where. Earlier today, I stopped out at the rodeo basin. We've got first-flush samplers there. Did they catch enough to make it a viable sample? And that partnership, the other two legs of that are Prescott College and ADEQ. So, we're working in a cooperative fashion so that we can get the most bang for our buck across all these creeks and lakes.
Thank you.
Now, not too far in the distant future here, September of this year, we've got a couple of other requirements in place. One is the GIS mapping of our storm drain infrastructure. And fortunately, ADEQ has indicated to us that for all the above-ground stuff, the aerial images that are available through a number of services such as Google and that we contract ourselves, as we did in 2016, are adequate for their purposes. That doesn't touch on the underground stuff. And our GIS department's been doing a bang-up job of getting as-bills into place and mapped. But as this example here of the downtown areas, we're in that kind of upper-right quadrant, looking at just on the southern end of Mile High Athletic Field, where Carlton crosses the creek, that 225 would indicate one outfall, but in reality, we know there's at least three or four there. So, that's one of those things where I'll need to go back and verify in the field, these different things, characterize them, and to build the robustness of our storm drain mapping program. Annual reports. Since we just transitioned from FY17 into FY18, there is annual reporting associated with this permit. ADEQ's going through a lot of growth in that they are bringing onboard a lot more electronic reporting. And so, our annual report is typically due at the end of September, but they've already granted, not granted, they've said that they'll extend that deadline because they have not yet created the template we're supposed to submit it on. So, we're kind of waiting for them and that's supposed to come out in August. And finally, in 2018, we'll be looking at the enforcement authority that we have through City Code Chapters 16-4, 16-5, and 16-6. Now, what we have in place is good. It's a great foundation. One of the things that this provides an opportunity for us to do is to tighten it up so it reduces any kind of subjectivity and allows for more broadly applicable enforcement if that need be the case. We've worked with Legal Department, Clyde specifically, in drafting some of this draft language that hopefully a year from now, you'll be seeing in front of you. To provide a bit of an overall summary here, we're still in the very earliest stages of this new MS4 permit. And bringing this onboard and the requirements of it is an increase in workload as well as the annual operations, what it means for us out and on the ground. We're currently keeping our heads above the water, but those regulatory waters are actually rising. And we are trying to identify opportunities to maximize efficiencies with regards to technology, tablets tied into our new resource tracking software. Currently, if I'm out in the field doing these kind of outfall monitoring, I'm spending, you know, three minutes processing for every one minute in the field. And so, if you extrapolate that to 100 different outfalls that I'm doing, that's a lot of time just kind of being a number cruncher behind the computer, getting that onboard. So, the more that we can streamline that, the more, the greater ability I'll have to be out in the field documenting the work that we're doing and then identifying problems as well. And also, the partnership should not be underemphasized either. A lot of what we do really is magnified by our ability to work with partners. And we definitely want to see that continue, if not grow, into the future. There's a lot of great institutions here in town that we have opportunity to work with, and so, we'll be exploring those as well, whether it's Yaviva College, Prescott College, the Highland Center, any number of them, so. And finally, just a reiteration that some of these capital improvement projects that are under construction, in design, or just in theory, are great ways of not only modernizing our city's infrastructure, but also improving these water quality components. And we will strive to provide numbers to document that going forward. And now, I'll make a little bit of a shift. Technically speaking, this would be considered groundwater, but due to the site's location, Miller Valley Road and Hillside Avenue, kind of that intersection there by Fry's, there's a really close proximity from groundwater to surface water. Miller Creek courses right through that area. Arizona Department of Environmental Quality was investigating a suspected underground storage tank leak, and they came across elevated pollutant levels. PCE and TCE are the names of them. Those are industrial solvents that are sometimes associated with dry cleaning, and they have a tendency to persist in groundwater. As soon as I learned of this, I contacted their public information officer and their hydrologist. They're in the early stages of a remedial investigation. And one of the first things we wanted to do was to make sure that there wasn't a continuity between that groundwater pollutant load and the surface water. There's a number of potential exposure points along that creek for the homeless population that's in the area, as well as other users of those trail systems near the creek. So, we just wanted to make sure that there wasn't that pollutant present in the creek. Working with the ADEQ hydrologist, we got out and established that there wasn't any in the creek. So, that's a great first start. But this is the beginning of a remedial investigation, and they will be doing additional monitoring, setting up monitoring wells. And the silver lining to this particular pollutant is that it's not atypical across the scale of Arizona. ADEQ has dealt with this on a number of different occasions. Most notably, three sites have been delisted for this, have returned to the applicable groundwater standards. One of them did so many years and many millions of dollars ahead of time because they utilized a new technology that allows in-stitu kind of injection-type treatments in the court-site wash area. So, we'll be working closely with those folks to reach out to those people who still have irrigation wells in the area to make sure that there's no chance that any of those groundwater wells be used for anything other than their intended purposes of irrigation. And we'll keep you updated as events warrant. And with that, I open to questions.
Councilor Blair?
All interesting news, and we appreciate it. At what point do you see some kind of remediation plan for the lakes to be deemed usable by the public? You know, meaning aeration, aerification of the lake, or whether it means dredging of the lake? What is your overall thought when you're working on these different creeks to bring them more into a standard of being an approved standard, like from the fairgrounds? Now, you're not getting those pollutants watching into the lake. At what point in time can we say we've reached our objective? objective?
Well, looking at kind of the milestones of that contract, tomorrow will mark the eighth of 12 monthly monitoring. So we know that that monitoring will go on through November or December. So after that, that's when they do the number crunching. And part of that will also come back as another contract amendment to you folks. And so that we will have AMAC Foster Wheeler here to present, presumably in a study session before a voting session, where we will inform you of what we've learned to date. And the management plan would lay out those options and costs associated with them with regards to all the different options that are commonplace for lake management. And so it partly relies on you folks as well in terms of when we bring this to you, if it's something that you would want to approve or not.
So you're going to bring that to us within the next six months?
No. I do not expect that to happen.
How long?
If we are continuing to do the analytical monitoring, I'd expect that to go through November. They're going to be doing the number crunching thereafter, I would say, in the springtime.
Okay. So within a year?
I would hope so.
Okay. I'm just pressing you.
You know, I think everybody would like to see this resolved, but we also want to make sure that we measure twice and cut once.
And I appreciate that, because the anglers out there want to know, the people that are outdoor recreation folks, the kayakers, everybody wants to know what the process has been. And we can see now that you've made some great headway on it. And so I think ultimately would be a goal to tell everybody that we have now reached a level, that we have a plan to be able to address that. And this is our plan in a time when we can say it's really for recreation as well as water storage.
Yeah. In the spirit of some of those user groups, I do monitor the fish advisories. I've never seen Watson Lake mentioned in that term. And that's something I do on a regular basis. Game and Fish has identified it as an important fishery going forward. So I think there's even greater opportunity with the recreation staff and the general public to really see that blossom. And underlying all of that is making sure that it's a healthy water body for animal and human alike.
Thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. And you talked about partnering. And fishing game are good ones to partner with. And they have particular types of dollars and cents available through the state as well, sometimes through the feds, to help with some of these bodies of water. And are we pursuing those at this time?
Not at the current time. The traditional funding sources that I've looked at in the past are tied to ADQ. And quite frankly, I've talked with the coordinator for that in recent days, and he said that the rodeo grounds was even a bit of a stretch for that program. He did indicate there were some other funds that might be coming available. He'd heard mumblings, but nothing solid yet. So we will obviously knock on every door.
And I appreciate your comment, and especially your candor with regards to mumblings. But let's not forget, we do have a little bit of success to try and help say, you know what, we talked and we visited and we did this, we did this. And look at some of the positive results that have happened because of working with ADQ, and especially with regards to what was going down those creeks. So.
We'll seek out every opportunity that applies.
Thank you.
Councilman Chisika?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, something like Watson Lake is not a swimming lake. I think people get the idea that, oh, my gosh, if I go out in a kayak and I fall in the water, that something horrible is going to happen to them.
Turn green.
Yeah. So tell me, just how does that all work?
I know the numbers a little bit better on the creeks, so I'm going to jump into the creeks rather than the lake to start. So the full-body contact standard that's established for the creeks is that 235 colony-forming units of E. coli per 100 milliliters. What does that mean? What it means is, based on studies long ago, that would mean full-body submersion. If 1,000 people did that, eight people would get sick. That's where the standard originates from. And so what's interesting, as you go down from the creeks down to the lake, the lake is not listed as impaired for E. coli because we have the dilution effect of all the contributing waters that come in. And that brings it into a satisfactory and passing level. So that's not it. The impairments for the lake are nitrogen and dissolved oxygen. And those are really mostly associated with a lot of kind of lake eutrophication processes where we just get these kind of negative cycles because we don't have some of the natural flushing mechanisms that a natural water body would have. And so that's, you know, we've got a long history of use and nutrient cycling going on there that we're trying to break. And it's going to be a significant effort to do so.
Councilman Blair mentioned aerification. Where does aerification, what result would we have from aerification?
It would help reduce some of the anaerobic bacteria that are taking place in a lot of that kind of decomposing vegetative manner. And so it's one of the more commonly used processes for lake management. And you see that a lot in places like Florida. Every lake you go to has a little bubbler somewhere in it. And so I haven't seen it as widely applied here in Arizona, but I think it's going to be becoming increasingly common as these lakes age.
Thank you.
I think Mountain Valley Park out in Prescott Valley, they have two, what I would call retention ponds. They're drainage ponds is what they are. They have aerification in those, and you don't see the green buildup like you see within our lakes. And there's probably a lot of different reasons for that. But I think anytime we could put aerification to them and reduce that load, I think is a positive thing. So I'm looking forward to your next presentation to see what we can do as a council with the fee that we have in place, Jim, on the water side, to be able to manage and to put in an aerification system to make those better usable for our recreation public. Thank you.
Couple of questions I have is, what kind of coordination do you do with the county, Prescott Forest, BLM? And all these creeks start outside of the Prescott City limits. So what kind of contaminants do we have coming in? Are we taking a look at the upstream pollutants to determine how much is coming from outside the Prescott City limits and what's coming from within the Prescott City limits?
So the total maximum daily load documents provide estimates for that. But in kind of an ongoing effort, we're always looking to better establish what that is. When Arizona Department of Environmental Quality established the natural background levels of some of these pollutants in the document themselves, they identified them as not being particularly robust. They were on fairly limited sample sizes. And so that is something that we endeavor to do as well. One of the easiest access points to do that is on Granite Creek, right up there across from, I believe it's Jack Pine Road, where the Forest Service Trail System. So anytime that I'm out sampling, that is always high on my list of priorities to get to. We have to get, you know, a certain number of outfalls sampled for each wet season, and so that's the highest to meet that regulatory compliance. But shortly thereafter is monitoring what's coming in across our borders as well to help inform that process. And one of the things that, another application for that is we have a number of water bodies that are proposed for impairment. And they all enter the city, but two of them in particular have very minimal city or MS4 interface. In the case of Banning Creek, that is mostly privately owned roads, so it's not part of our MS4. It's within city boundaries, but it's not the MS4. For us, it's the city-owned streets. And so that will be providing pollutant inputs at Granite Creek at that upper end, that southern end. And so documenting it there as well as at our boundary are ongoing kind of goals so that we can be better informed when we're having these discussions with ADQ.
About Butte Creek, because, you know, we have camps up in that area. We've also got various housing up in that area. One of the things that probably goes with my second question is, you know, I've talked to people that say they see raw sewage running in some of the creeks in town. I feel that's probably due, in some cases, to, you know, overflowing septics or leaking septics or things of that nature. So I'm always worried that, you know, when you've got a lot of human activity, you know, out in the forest or in areas that used to be forest, and now, you know, we've actually got people having residences in that area and camps where you have horses and animals and stuff like that, we could be getting pollution from outside the city limits. That, you know, I'm not sure there's any way that we can get the State of Arizona, the US Forest Service, or, you know, Yavva Bay County, or BLM, or anything to pony up on some of the costs of trying to mitigate pollution in our water system here. But I think it's something we ought to look at. Are you finding any kind of additional, are you finding any creeks that seem to have a high level of pollutants in it from possibly leaking septic tanks?
Yes. I mean, we do have map layers in place that would identify those unsuared areas. And so a couple of months ago, I was out with ADQ. They actually were using a canine detection unit up Manzanita Creek, which is right there off Copper Basin going up into the Mountain Club area. Most of that area is unsuared and on septics. And so it wasn't productive in terms of, they didn't find any E. coli exceedances when the dogs alerted, but the dogs were trained to alert on the presence of human sewage. And so they're not triggering on the E. coli component of it that the impairment is for, but they are triggering on other components of it. And so that's something that they're trying to learn and develop as a way of detecting this. It could be potentially cost-effective. And so we did that with ADQ, and U of A Extension was doing the water quality on that. We do work with the county. Paul Young has been a great counterpart over there. And so that we try to make sure that we're not doing, making efforts that are kind of counterproductive or repetitive either. But, you know, to the topic of sewage in the creek, there are a number of really significant capital improvement projects that are in design currently that will take great steps towards improving that condition. And so I'm looking forward to see those come to fruition as well.
Where are those capital improvement projects?
They're currently in design from the VA, going all the way back over to Miller Valley Road is a significant one. We had one that just went underneath Watson Woods Preserve, and they did a great job in minimizing disturbance to the preserve there. And so there's a whole series of these laid out that will be not only improving the service of our wastewater treatment plant, but also significantly improving our water quality as well. There's just a lot fewer joints where bad things can happen.
Okay. So what are we doing on Willow Creek? Because that's where I'm getting some reports of, you know, raw sewage running in the stream bed.
I would definitely encourage anybody anywhere in the city, if they were to see such a thing, to give us a call, and we'll get somebody out there as soon as we can. That's something that obviously we want to curtail and, you know, fix as soon as possible, whether that's our system or helping that private resident identify what fixes need to go in place, both short-term and long-term on that property. Willow Creek currently does not have any impairments listed on it itself. And so the analytical monitoring that I do does not take me over there nearly as much.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for your comment, because I brought that up quite extensively back when we were discussing the TMDOs and all that stuff. We're going back a number of years ago now, when we were working with ADQ. In fact, the matter is, most of the citizens that currently, in ratepayers that currently live in the city of Prescott aren't necessarily responsible for the raw sewage, et cetera, that's out in the forest, or on BLM land, or on the cattle ranches, or some of the burning that takes place out in the forest. And that's one of the reasons why I'm saying collaboratively, looking for the monies that are necessary to take care of the problems from the various different agencies that are available to the city, whether it be from the state or the federal government, not necessarily with our handout begging. But at the end of the day, culpability's a big issue. And I mean, it's not Prescott Forest, per se. It's Arizona State Forest, or it's the National Forest, or it's BLM land, or where you have squatters, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it's not necessarily financially justifiable to subject the citizen residents of Prescott to having to pay for what ultimately is a responsibility of other governmental agencies. So I'm just sharing that with you.
Yes, and we'll definitely keep that in mind. It is worth noting that the vast majority of this pollution comes from impervious surfaces. And the forest doesn't have nearly the same extent of that as we do here. A significant portion of this is ours to deal with and fix for the water quality and the health of our community.
You're talking about the drainage?
I'm talking about where pollutants both are created and how they're transported. It's a much higher rate on those impervious surfaces that are more likely to occur in the heart of downtown and within city limits. There are pollutants that are coming into the city, and we'll work to better identify those numbers, but the majority of it is going to lie in our breadbasket.
Thank you.
Councilman Ohr?
Could we get a list of the improvement capital projects that are coming up? You said they're in design?
Mm-hmm.
Could we just get a list and see what those are?
Yeah, I can work on compiling something.
And maybe with a timeline?
Yeah, kind of giving a rough ETA for when those are.
Okay, sure.
Any more questions from the council? Any from the public? Come on down.
Dr. Peter Krupnick, Mayor, Council. Couple of comments, if I may. My history is I'm an environmental chemist/hydrologist. I've worked with several council members. First of all, I'd like to thank Matt. Excellent presentation. He really has a finger for what's happening in our community. Thank you. The next, I'd like to sort of second Councilman Mayor Protem's comments about the public education and what we're doing. But ask a question. Two of our other very public areas where we've tried to control runoff are the Senior Center and what we call the Taco Bell Basin across the street from the hospital. So I'd like to ask, do we have numbers yet on reductions on the success of those highly visible projects?
We do, but not in my hand at the moment. And actually, one of the things that we try to do as we monitor that green infrastructure is I take the rodeo grounds, and Prescott Creeks are often the ones out at the adult center up on Rossar Street or down. But consistently, we do see reductions through that. I don't remember them being quite as significant, but on the order of 50% reductions in the Taco Basin, the Bio Basin there, right by the hospital. A lot of this kind of depends on when that storm is happening. Last night's storm that really sent runoff through was a significant kind of first flush mechanism. And so if you can imagine what some of that water looked like, it was collecting everything that had been deposited for the last two months. And so there's a really big pollutant load in that. Now, if we were to get something this afternoon, it's going to be different. Similarly, at the rodeo basin, it has a certain capacity, at which point we see 60% to 70% reductions. If we get beyond that, where those little burms are in that earthen part of the basin, it's just overtopping and going to the creek, and we don't see that. So the timing of those and the scale of those events all contribute to the numbers we see at the end. But we do consistently see reductions across all three of those infrastructures. And I did note that Prescott Creeks recently installed some first flush samplers at the basin. So when we do get storms like last night come through at 8:30, 9 o'clock, we can go back out the next day, collect that, and have a good first flush sample in place, rather than sending somebody out there in those kind of conditions.
Do you have any further questions?
Yes. Just to go on, just so everybody remembers, the contributions from the forest was basically first assessed with a watershed improvement project run through Prescott Creeks. And most of our early numbers all come from that. So we've been working together on this for many years. And finally, a comment from Councilman Blair. Changing hats, in my spare time, I'm a volunteer park ranger. I'm out there in the parks all weekends, meeting with the visitors who come to see Watson and Willow Lakes. One of the biggest jobs I have in that capacity is keeping the people out of the water. They all see, especially children, they want to swim. And yet, it's in the city regulation, it's posted, no swimming out there. And I think it's, Watson especially, but even Willow, it's a big attraction. Visitors come up here from the valley, from Flagstaff. They want to get in our lakes. And we need to clean these up. We need to get the bacteria out of there so that these are good recreational opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Michael Byrd. I'm the Executive Director with Prescott Creeks, and I just wanted to make a few quick comments. I would echo everybody else's comments that Matt and the city collectively have been doing a fantastic job with, I think, really trying to understand what our surface water quality issues are and how we can move forward trying to address those issues. I think it took a while to get the community started really understanding what the ramifications of some of those issues might be, but I think we're making great progress toward answering those questions and getting a plan in place so we can know what's the timeline to get these sorts of things implemented, what are the costs going to be, how are we going to share those with our community stakeholders and other partners. So I'd like to, you know, just give a handout to the city and let them know that we've been pleased with the partnership that we've had with the city over the been pleased with the partnership that we've had with the city over the years, and look forward to continuing that. As to some of the specific questions with the Whipple Basin or the Taco Basin that Dr. Krupnick was mentioning, and with the community adult center, the two projects that we've done there, we haven't monitored as extensively as Matt has done with the rodeo project, but we've seen similar results. He was correct, and we've been seeing about a 50% reduction on what's coming in and then what's going out. And I think one of the other things that we've done with those types of projects is we've tried to make them aesthetically pleasing. So it's not this big concrete and steel thing that says stay out and, you know, is something that dissuades people. We want to build it as part of our landscape, as something that people will see and not necessarily associate with stormwater improvement, but it's just an appealing part of the landscape. So at the adult center in particular, we introduced a lot of colorful vegetation that's appropriate for this area. It's not going to use tons of water, those sorts of things. And over at the Whipple Basin, we implemented a lot of native vegetation, cottonwoods and willows. And what we've been seeing over the last two years since those have been in place and really starting to come into their own, is they're attracting a lot of wildlife, bird species in particular, some noteworthy species that hadn't been seen in those areas in the past. And so those are amenities to our community as well, sometimes easily overlooked unless you're one of those people who walks around viewing the world through your binoculars. But there are a variety of different benefits that we get out of these types of solutions. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and make comments and appreciate all the great work that's happening. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for that great briefing and comments from the public. We'll start again at 3 o'clock with our voting meeting, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.